Okay, so help me out folks in the room, we can call the meeting to order. Public comment. Anybody there?
I think this happened with the hack.
No, no public comment in person.
Go ahead, Chapin.
I didn't know this might be the place to just say that I did follow up with the Energy Committee. I guess it was last week. About the fact that they hadn't supported solar over the Town Hall Parking Lot Project. And Melinda very nicely sent me links and told me exactly where in the discussions and so forth. It was discussed in the past. And I just spoke during there, it was too late to change what we sent to the Select Board. But I did just let them know that we were out of sync and I was sad about that. And from listening to their meetings. They were concerned with wanting to spend money where it had the most bang for the buck. And they thought charging stations was more important than solar canopies and things like that. They really weren't thinking about the fact that our energy plan says we need to double the amount of solar in town. And where we should do it is over existing. Roots are top priority and parking lots are second. Parking lots and landfills are second and so forth. And so I really feel like they were missing an important point there. But I made that point to them in the public comment period. I had the previous night last Tuesday, watched live the Select Board Discussion of the Budget. And I felt like it wasn't the right time anyway to make waves. That particular item is going to be in a bond vote in March, separate from a bond vote for the fire suppression in the brick church. If it passes, it's still, that's, that's, we then have some funding to start the project, but the project won't have started. So I feel like. I'd like to follow up and have more conversation with the Energy Committee. Because if after considering those other things, they would support having solar canopies. Or at least working out where it was feasible, have a solar canopy there, maybe only part of it. Then I think it, it might be worth seeking additional funding, like a grant just for that purpose. So I just wanted to follow up that. It's, nothing has changed, but that I did share our perspective that they didn't seem to have. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Sheila.
Thank you, Chapin, for that and for following up. I just wanted similarly to follow up and say, thank you to everybody who put in comments to that memo that was sent over to the Select Board and that, sorry that we did it on a different timeframe. And thank you to Melinda for making sure it got there and keeping us all in line. So I do think that as we have this conversation about who is on a small team for which part of the town plan. I would love to try to, if, if people are amenable to this, keep that small team concept for the different sections of the town plan. And start to sort of pull that through some more of our work, particularly around budget. And do some more thoughtful pre-planning with department heads in those specific areas. Before we get a, you know, basically a fully baked capital budget, which is not the best time to weigh in for us, I think we are finding.
If I may, I, I did look at the editing that was happening on that document for the review of the capital budget. And liked what was happening with that document. But I didn't see a final of what we sent. It probably was in the packet for the Select Board, but has it been shared with us?
I only sent it, I sent it on to the Select Board and CC the Chairs. But I believe it's in the Select Board Packet. If not, I can definitely share guys.
For, for convenience, could it be attached to, or linked from our next agenda or something? I'm not sure how best.
Okay. There was no other public in the room, no other comments online that I see. The minutes.
Before we do minutes, I have to jump over to the Select Board. So I want to see if it's okay to do the Downtown Transportation Fund first.
Oh, yeah.
Go for it.
So I have a resolution for a Planning Commission Chair to sign. We are applying for a grant, the Downtown Transportation Fund, for a Williston Village Municipal Parking Lot Improvement Project. It would expand and reconfigure the parking lot to add a thorough range of spaces. It would also include EV charging, improve ADA access and changes. There are no changes or modifications proposed to the existing historic buildings. The second page of this memo is the resolution form. Sheila or Jill, probably easiest, I can email this to you and you can sign it and scan it back to me. And then the Select Board, I think we'll be able to take it up at their meeting next week to sign it.
Is it, I mean, I'm happy to get it, but is there any discussion that needs to happen amongst us around this? I think most people are for ADA and those sorts of things.
Apply for a separate grant for solar over it.
Adding that in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think this should be changed. This, I think this is great.
You make a good point though, Chapin, that, you know, if people are only trying to reach for what they think is attainable, we're not really reaching for what we need to do. So I think continuing to push that line is good.
I guess I have questions over if we apply for this grant, obviously requires a town match. And the funding that the town matches, like the funding that the town would have to put up. Like everything is a, like, it's an either or. And so what types of things are we giving up because it's prioritizing car parking? And like, obviously there are like more parking spaces, EV charging, improved ADA access, drainage, like stuff like, like, like all good things. But it's like, what, like, what's the, what are we giving up? Because there's, there's a town match required.
I can answer in that, having watched the Select Board Discussion of the Budget, that they are going to put a bond-ish vote to the town for this. So it'll be a separate item, the town will have voted to support it. It's not a trade off.
Cool. Thank you. And then if we get the grant funding, then that would be a bonus.
I just, I just had a question, the, the plan that was attached as well. That are, are we locked into that? Or is that kind of speculative and draft, drafty?
That's a good question, so. I believe it's somewhat speculative. Honestly, I don't really know. It will have to go through the DRB. And there are elements of this site plan where I have noted that it doesn't meet the full compliance of our bylaw. For example, two islands with trees would be removed. And then everything shown here is pavement hatching. So if we get the, the budget moving forward, the town will still have to go through its own permitting process. And that's where non-conforming issues, parking and setbacks, parking island landscape standards, outdoor lighting standards will be discussed at the Development Review Board level. Outdoor lighting goes through design review as well. So it would still need to go through permitting.
I see. Yeah, I was curious about the, those very regulations. But also the fact that there only seemed to be one EV space on this sketch. So I was kind of curious like, oh, is this just kind of a quick draft? Or are we locked into something? So thank you for that answer. It sounds like there's more detail to come.
And for example, the outdoor parking at the Town Hall doesn't comply. Our bylaw requires that it be on a paved surface or a concrete pad, that the rack be bolted to the ground. So I'm hopeful that the project scope anticipates bringing our whole suite of parking into our parking standards into compliance vis a vis lighting and bicycle parking. Thus far, this plan does not evoke a lot of confidence, but stay tuned for DRB review.
It's a pre, pre-application.
It's, yeah, pre, pre-application. Yeah. All right, I'm headed over to the Select Board and then I'll get this form to you guys digitally.
I, I guess my one thing would be though, if, like, if we're going to do a bond vote, we better get more than one EV charging station. So do we need to put that into the statement?
If that's something the Planning Commission mentions, I can communicate that to the Town Manager and see if, if there's wiggle room. I'm sure our grant application will be more competitive if it shows more than one EV charge on the plan.
So the plan does show EV charging units, plural. So there are two EV chargers there, but they may not have, I don't know why they only marked out one space. There should be at least two.
Yeah, the, the grant would be more competitive with more spaces, I would think.
Yeah.
Somehow I missed this diagram in reviewing it. And I was going to say the plan, the written plan that I had seen previously said there would be conduit for multiple EV stations included. So there would be a lot of buried conduit. So that future EVs could be added.
Yeah, that, that is true. That's both for the public and for the police department.
Oh, yeah. Good point, Melinda. That garage where on the bottom left, right bottom right corner is where the public or the police cruisers park. And that's planned to have conduit run. So if there's EVP, police cruisers, they can adapt that garage.
Thank you, Emily.
Thanks, guys. See you later.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good luck.
Do we want to go back up to minutes now or is there any need to? Jump around, Melinda?
No.
Okay.
Sure.
January 2nd?
Yep. I'm sorry, Jill and Melinda. Were we supposed to vote on the DTF thing? Yeah, maybe it'd be a good idea. Why, why don't, let's, let's back up and, and why don't you do that, take a vote on it?
Okay. Do we want to do the motions and all of them?
I can do the, the motion. I, Shayle Livingston moved that the Williston Planning Commission authorize a Planning Commission Co-Chair or Vice Chair to sign the resolution form.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going to dissent when I oppose, or whatever my word is.
Yeah.
Just given the, just given the parameters on like the eligibility and like the things that they're looking for when they grade these grants. It's really focused on like kind of revitalizing downtown areas and like kind of the commerce like of that. And obviously that's really hard in our village center because there's not a lot of that. And most of our commerce is downtown. But, and like I hear what we're saying about putting it to a common bond. But obviously, the town's willingness to support new funding for things has a limit. And I guess I'm, I'm hesitant to see it go towards a parking lot when we know we have higher needs elsewhere. So.
So one abstention, the rest.
And I don't know if you had a second. If you didn't, I'm happy to second.
All right. Thank you, Chapin. All right, now to the minutes.
I also want to say your point is well taken, Hannah.
Yeah.
Figured it was worth sharing. I know it's going to go through.
So let's see.
It looks as though we don't have a Chair or a Vice Chair in the room. Is that so?
That is so.
Yeah, we're all alone.
She's going to email because we can use technology to our advantage.
Okay.
All right, back to the minutes.
I'll just say that first correction or suggested correction is from me, which is, it sounded as though it was written, as though I was for adding the canopies and nobody else was. And as though I wanted to go ahead with putting something in our memo. And I, I think I was clear from the beginning that I didn't want to say anything that the Energy Committee couldn't support. And so I thought we as a group decided not to say anything about solar canopy without talking to energy first.
Yeah, that checks out with my recollection. I also wasn't sure if you want, like, if we wanted to clarify, like, from my memory. Other Commissioners, I think that other Commissioner was just me. And so we can call me out and because I don't want to speak for the entire rest of the Commission. If that's how, if that's how other people also didn't fall into the like wanting to defer. But I also agree with the changes as made.
I'm good with the changes.
Do we want to entertain a motion?
I'll move to accept the minutes as amended. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Okay.
And it was nice this time, we weren't allowed to actually edit it. We were only allowed to make suggestions, which is the nice way to have it. So essentially what we're voting is to accept the suggestions.
Okay, on to the Unified Planning Work Program.
Okay, I guess I can give you an overview of that. So this is the time of year when CCRPC issues their request for projects from municipalities for the FY '25. Starting in, in next July. So Public Works puts together some projects. Some, some of these are studies, others are like, you know, just inventories and traffic counts. And then planning has usually put together a list of projects. So I'll just kind of go through. Yeah, so, so the, the big one for Public Works is that they want to do a scoping study on an, the intersection of Marshall Ave and South Brownell Road. Evaluating the intersections functioning and assessing what improvements are needed along the corridor, Marshall Ave corridor in the area of this intersection. And, and then they had, also had some traffic count requests along River Cove Road and along Mountain View Road near, let's see, one, one location between Redmond Road and Route 2A and the other between Redmond Road and Old Stage Road. Just because the area is getting, getting more traffic because of business expansions on Redmond Road. And, you know, it's probably a good idea to continue to monitor traffic volumes. And then for River Cove, just that it's, you know, continues to serve as a connection between Williston and South Burlington. And so it's, it's also good to monitor changes in traffic over time on that road. And then they're also requesting, they want to use a closed circuit TV to inspect stormwater drainage pipes or stormwater pipes in older developments, the ones west of 2A and north of Route 2. As the first phase in a multi-year effort to inspect all the closed stormwater and all the stormwater pipes. And they chose this area because it contains older homes. The oldest, really the oldest homes in Williston, I mean, not the oldest, but the oldest of like the newer subdivisions. You know, the, all the subdivisions like in, you know, Lamp Light and those neighborhoods up there, just being, I guess, from the 60s and 70s. And then for planning, we are requesting, I think, I think you know about this one, an updated scoping study for multimodal improvements along Route 2, Williston Road from Village to Taff Corners, which is something we've heard that a lot, especially this fall during our outreach that people want to see move forward. And so the, there, there has been a scoping study done. It was done in 2014. And I think the advice we got from CCRPC was to update that scoping study. Make sure that the selected alternative is still what the community desires. And then the projects, you know, in order to move the project forward beyond a scoping study, that's going to require some funding. And this is a, a project that is on the tip or the Transportation Improvement Program, which is a list of projects in Chittenden County that are kind of slated to be funded with both state and federal funding. This one happened to be a circ-alternative project, but it is on the list, but it does not have any definitive timeframe to get it done, nor does it have any funding. So just something to keep in mind. But, but anyway, we are going to at least get that scoping study updated. And then our second request was for some assistance with the Economic Development Chapter in the Town Plan. The existing chapter is pretty weak. It mostly just references other chapters in the bylaw and just call, just sort of calls out how those chapters, how those chapter goals and objectives relate or help economic development. So we'd like to make it a little more robust. And kind of using the West Central Vermont Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy as kind of a model. This, that report was done pretty recently, in the last year or so. And it was, CCRPC did this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. West Central Vermont is essentially Addison, Chittenden. And maybe, I can't remember the third. It may be Franklin County, but I'm not, don't quote me on that. I don't, I'm not remembering what the third county is. But basically like considering a whole host of, of of metrics related to economic development. Looking at age, race, educational attainment, income, disability status, commuting patterns, all things that, that helped to shape Williston's economy. A discussion of infrastructure like transportation, housing, broadband, municipal water and wastewater treatment, stormwater treatment, et cetera, as drivers of economic opportunity and resilience. And then looking at ways that we can strengthen the town's economic resilience through regional partnerships, workforce, workforce development initiatives and by supporting childcare. And then the last project that we're requesting is a road, Oak Hill Road, Road Safety Audit. Basically looking at the Oak Hill Road corridor and, and safety concerns along that corridor from Williston to, Williston Road to the Butter Nut Road intersection. And we noted that the current comprehensive plan does call for studying the need for improvements on Oak Hill Road. And, you know, that it, it does function as an arterial road. And that this would complement a recent study done for North Williston Road, identifying proposed improvements along that road to enhance safety and, and just, just enhance the road for bike and pedestrian usage. So this is basically the first step. It's, it's very cursory. We would, they would do an analysis of of speed, speed and volumes. And then basically write out a list of proposed improvements. So that's, that's pretty much it. You have any questions about these? I'd be happy to discuss.
Go ahead. Sorry, muted.
Sorry about that. I wanted to thank you, Melinda. I saw that you'd filled out a lot of the detail on these. And especially the first one on the, the ones that the Planning Department is sponsoring those three. The first one is the connection to Taff Corners to the Village. And I'm really glad to see that brought up this way. And I had an ancillary question, which was last week, Department of V-Trans was surveying Route 2 through the Village. Do you know why? Did they have planned improvements?
I don't know why. No, I mean, there, there is a plan, a rebuild of Route 2, but it's not supposed to be done until 2029.
The reason I was wondering, I didn't know why, and I was curious, but also I noticed that you had drawn the shared use path going all the way to North Williston Road. You have the corner quick stop, which I think is fantastic. But I think in order to have a shared use path on one side of Route 2 through the Village, that interacts with how the Route 2 itself goes, you know, the road itself goes. So I would hate to see them redo the road and then go to put a, as a separate project, put a shared use path next to it where the space is as cramped as it is through the Village.
Yeah. I don't know what's going on there. My mind, I won't talk. Yeah, so, so basically it took what was in the, the 2014 scoping study and just proposed to cover the same area. It doesn't mean that, you know, that there has to be a shared use path through the Village, but that the scoping would cover that area, basically. And, yeah, you're right, that, that it doesn't make sense for them to rebuild the entire road and then build this, a shared use path as an afterthought. Like, it is our hope that if, you know, if this project were to move forward, that it would be done in conjunction with that major rebuild. That would make the most sense, but.
Yes.
But it being V-Trans. We have limited control, but, you know.
Yeah. Thanks. And I, I also, I'm curious what other people think, but I feel like from our discussions, that is our highest priority pedestrian infrastructure project, I feel. And we haven't been talking about Oak Hill Road. But Oak Hill Road is pretty unsafe for cars and very unsafe for bicycles and not usable for pedestrians. And so the request for that study is really the first of, I hope, many steps to, to work towards. As we have effectively done with North Williston Road, we've made that safe for all three, I think.
Agreed. Well, I have a question if I could. Oh, I'm sorry, did somebody?
Well, Megan's got her hand up.
Go ahead, Megan.
Thank you. Yeah, when I joined the Planning Commission in 2009 or 10 or something like that, it was for these very two reasons, the path or something between the Village and Taff Corners and Oak Hill Road, which I live off of, and I live in the Village, on the Village end of it. And I did, just kind of like a little background, I did petition- Um, and um, I did, I just kind of like a little background, I did petition the Select Board about, I don't know, six or seven years ago to lower the speed limit. It was 40 um, in the village, uh, and they lowered it to 35, which is still too fast, at least for this little section really close into the four-way stop. But um, that's, that's just a little background context. But I also wanted to flag that um, in our, in the various ARPA um, suggestions and some of the other planning um, solicitations for ideas that have happened recently. Um, one of the things that I had proposed and, and put in one of the surveys was um, the idea of putting, uh, well, obviously a scoping study is desperately needed on, on Oak Hill Road. But I would also really love us at some point to rethink Oak Hill Road's section, particularly the part closest to the village up through about maybe the Thomas Chittenden Health Center. Um, I think it's really under, um, well, it's just a terrible at the moment, and yet it could actually be really a valuable connector. So, so many people, myself included, um, ride bikes down Oak Hill Road and then hop onto South Road. And that is a very, very tricky left turn when you're going uphill and you're trying to turn all the way around and back you to see if there uh, crazy people going 50. And so I think that that section in particular, I would love to see some kind of much more intensive pedestrian and cycling accommodations. Um, I realize it's tricky with the overpass, but the overpass is actually the widest section of it. The parts that are not wide are the ones that are not the overpass. So just wanted to throw a couple of ideas out there and really flag that, that piece as something that's so close to the heart of the village and yet is so terrible. Um, I can't even walk to the quick stop from my house on that road and feel safe. Um, because there's, there's nothing, especially if there's a snowbank there, so. Yeah, so anyway, just a couple of comments there, and I'm really happy to see this road finally getting, you know, maybe a bit of I realize it's only an audit at this point, but maybe we can get it moving. Thanks.
So a quick question, and this is out of ignorance on my part again, is kind of a newbie here. Your session about the economic development, we were looking at a variety of factors, including things like level of education and um, you know, type of jobs and that kind of thing. I'm just curious, is that information, is that readily available? I mean, is that, I, I don't know. I, I don't know what granularity we have.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. And, and of course, this, I mean, you, you can get it via census, census data, but it may have a very high margin of error. Some of the, some of this data will, and so the degree to which it's, it's really usable. You know, that should be taken into consideration, definitely.
I was just, I, that's, I think that's very important. I think that's the kind of information that could be really valuable to us. Uh, just didn't know if it was, it was out there.
Or it may need to be, I don't know, just scaled up, like some of it may need to be scaled up to the county level and, you know.
Yeah. From my GMT experience, I can say that it's available, but in, in separate places. For instance, who commutes into Williston to go to work um, is, comes, I think, from the tax department or something, which is not where some of the other information comes. And um, the Regional Planning Committee Commission is a very good place to get that data aggregated for us.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Any other discussion on this? That, I mean, that economic development chapter is the chapter I was looking for when we were buying our house here, like that kind of information was what was.
Lot of opportunity in, in this next plan to write a, a fuller fleshed one. And I think that'll be good.
Okay, annual report.
Okay.
I, I just want to say, I, I didn't know if everybody weighed in, but I, I, it sounded to me like Megan and I at least were strongly in favor of what you've written for the Planning Commission, uh, you'd be, those grants or that assistance.
Yeah, I didn't want to be extra redundant, but I really think it's in line with kind of everything that we've been talking about. I know I haven't been here very long, but we keep hearing over and over about the connection trail. And then everything that you were saying, Megan, about um, Oak Hill Road is just like, yeah, really in line with kind of what I've been seeing. And also goes in line with what we've been talking about, about how, you know, we're concentrating development in certain areas. Those people still need access to all the parts we're preserving, or else we've just preserved them for the people who live there. Um, so it's, seems really in line, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I really agree with that. And I, I mean, I feel a little funny because I live on Oak Hill Road, so I, I don't want to be too road, Oak Hill Road centric, but it just could be so much. I mean, so many people want to bike it, so many people want to walk it. There's trails at Ice Shams that nobody can get to unless they drive. You know, I, if there were a way to access that from the village, from Tuff's Corners, you know, we, and we can't have it all at once. So I think starting with the village to Tuff's Corners connection. And then we already have the connection north on North Williston Road, and those trails are really, are the path, the trails. It's really, you know, fairly good. Then focusing our, our energy southward, I think, makes sense.
I just wanted to add that um, South Road itself is, is almost like a, a multi-use path. In the way that's used, there are people, I mean, liter, I ride my bike there literally every day that it's rideable because that's how I get out of town. Um, whether I go down East Till Road or all the way down to the Jug Handle, I avoid that section of Oak Hill Road that South Road uh, allows me to miss on my bike. And, and people are walking, there are dogs, there's mud pond. You know, there, it's like, South Road is a rec path in a lot of ways. And, and yet we can't get to it from the village, right? It's like right there and you can't get there safely. And so it just seems like such a little piece of the puzzle to really open up a lot of great opportunities for people. Um, so again, very heavily invested in this as a resident of essentially Oak Hill Road. But um, uh, want to speak up for that.
Anybody else want to weigh in, Ellie, or I don't know, is um, Mickey there today? Or?
No.
No.
All right. Okay. Unified Planning Work Program requests. Is that, that's what we were just talking about. Let's go to the annual report.
Yeah. Um, oh, sorry. Here, I'll go back to the agenda.
Sorry, long day.
Yeah.
This is due soon, Thursday, not this week. Oh, yeah, this week.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You gotta get on this.
So um, th- this is like a very rough draft that I think one of staff worked on.
Yeah, Emily, so I, I, my apologies for apologizing to all you when I announced the meeting that we didn't have this. It turned out we did, but we've transitioned to a different document storage method that I wasn't paying attention to at 4:30 on Friday. And so then Emily emailed you at 7:30 on Friday night and said, actually, there is a draft annual report. Here it is. And, and I immediately realized that I wasn't looking in the right place. So I made her give us all SharePoint training this morning at our staff meeting. So anyway, this is a draft annual report. This is due Friday. Um, we get one, one page for the Planning Commission, one page for each committee. Um, and remember that this is about the fiscal year, so you have to think back to a year that ended six months ago in terms of what the Planning Commission did. And so one thing Emily said to me about writing this, she's like, well, we finally get to say that we got form-based code done. Even though it's now been in place for over a year. So that's, that's what it is. What I will say is I'm, I'm really excited about everything you all got done over the course of this, this year that ended uh, at the end of June. It's, it's a pretty, pretty terrific year, and, and I think we're having another one now. And let me, let me know if there's anything folks want to see added, emphasized, de-emphasized, uh, worded differently. Uh, happy to make any, any more changes that the group wants.
I had a couple of thoughts, and for instance, what you can see right there on um, form-based code, rather than saying what we attended or anything, I would just think it's the news item that the Select Board approved the um, form-based code that we had developed in the prior year.
Yeah.
Yeah. And under village bylaw, I would just say we had work sessions and commuting meetings and then shelved it while we got the form-based code through. And we'll be picking it up again in FY 2425.
Okay.
I, I feel like it could just be more like new, news rather than statistics.
Mm-hmm.
And then I, I had a question. It listed me as being vice chair and I, I was trying to remember when Kate took over, and it might have been July of 22. Is that when Kate took over being vice chair? So although I might have been vice chair on July 1st, Kate was vice chair most of the year. And um, I feel like we also should say who the current co-chairs and vice chair are, because even though they were elected in July and not in June, so that to the next fiscal year, that's the kind of information that our town is useful to our town to know who was the current.
Okay.
That, that's my comments about that.
Yeah, I had that same question. Kate, Kate was uh, because Kate was vice chair at that point for most of that year.
Just gonna make a note of that right here.
Yeah, and then in other words, let's do it as of our actions in the fiscal year, not what was in, in effect on July 1st.
Is there a way Emily can make that like an infographic that's like seats around a table, these ones were in, ones are out and like, you know, just, it's so texty or just like lists of names and things.
She's our, our Canva guru, so if anybody can.
Canvas is, I feel like, and then you could have also a nice picture of form-based code of you guys in costumes, like.
You know, you say Canvas is easy, but you haven't seen me try to do something with it.
Oh, really?
I, I think, I think it's just like any tool. It's like if you don't have time to focus on it, it's, it, Emily makes great stuff with Canva very quickly, so. If we can, if we can do it graphically, we will. Um, but, great.
Uh, I wanna, sorry if there's more discussion. I was just thinking like process, because that's pretty quick if you want readers on it or.
Uh, we'll reach out. How about jail to you and Shaywa's co-chairs? Um, just to finish that before we hand it off uh, at the end of the week.
That sounds great to me.
Great.
Do other members want to also be involved? I'm happy to. Chapin, I know you expressed interest.
I actually, I actually emailed um, the co-chairs just saying, um, I'd be happy to work on it if you wanted me to. But I also feel like the co-chair should take the lead, so I, I felt like you should ask if you wanted me to do anything on it.
I mean, I always love your input, so, but I don't want to make more work when it, it's just a one pager for and it's a quick turnaround. Matt, why don't you send it to all three of us?
Will do.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to comment regarding Chapin's um, request for the current members to be in there. They actually are at the top of the second page, um, because it's who respectfully submitted it. Um, and so, you know, it's, it is there, it's sort of in an odd spot and exceeding the one-page limit. But um, yeah, maybe some font size wiggling or something like that. And then actually just looking at that list reminded me that one of the things that I think we, maybe we did in that fiscal year was to add the alternate at long last.
Yeah.
So maybe also um, flag that. So I think that is really important. I, I love having an alternate. It's, it's everything I hoped it would be.
Right, we can do that.
Okay, are we feeling good about that? Williston 2015, Plan Task Forces, Town Plan Task Forces.
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Why don't you put that crosswalk document up? You know, for those of you who aren't in the room, I wish you were here to see our big new TV. You can read documents on the screen. It's, it's really nice.
Oh, stop it, really?
Yeah, but so the trick is you have the Public Works Director host a meeting down here. And then he gets really frustrated. And he comes over to my office, he says, Matt, do you have 250 bucks in your, in your budget somewhere? And I said, yeah. And he said, let's just split a TV and be done with it. And, and then of course, he controls the guys who install the TVs. So we got the, the guys and he's like, go down to Best Buy, get a TV, get a bracket. $579 later, here we are.
Oh, happy.
Wow.
That's huge. Wow. Okay, but why can't we get other things done that quickly?
Because they're not, they're not cheap TVs. But you know, in their defense, the, the, the two public works guys who do our grounds were out during the snowstorm today doing the walkways around um, Town Hall, and they had gotten done shoveling, and they have one of those things that you push and it, you know, it spreads the salt. Except the spreader wasn't working, so they were just pushing it and then hand sewing the salt out of it by hand, out of, out of the bin. I thought we ought to, you know, if we can get a new TV, we ought to buy these guys a new salt spreader for the Town Hall complex. But um, so I've, I had this on the agenda last time. I, I wanted to do something fancier like a survey or something and, and follow-up uh, email. But uh, my goal here is to start to kind of divide and conquer on the tasks related to drafting all of our Town Plan chapters. Keep everybody up to speed. Um, the survey, the Williston 2050 survey is out through January 29th. Um, there'll be a pretty good-sized ad in The Observer this week, reminding people to go take that survey if they haven't. I know we have had something over a hundred respondents, but not like much over a hundred. So it's, it's a, it's a piece of engagement. It's, it's a piece out of many. Um, but I'm also working with North Star, our consultant on talking a little bit about the logistics of the engagement report. That should be available for us to start reviewing, I think by the end of February, probably by our second meeting in February, uh, or close to it. Um, and I've really asked them to focus on summarizing and reporting the more on the sort of the numbers side of things. How many people came? How many times did people say something about this or that um, subject? And the, the question our consultant asked me was, well, we also typically do this like sort of vision and values stuff. And I said, why don't you give me some examples of like how much of that ends up in the engagement report? And have staff in the Planning Commission write that up? Because I think all of your sort of qualitative experience of the um, roundtables will be more helpful in, in crafting that statement of like, here's, here's what the town told us our vision and values ought to be around this document. So um, we're, we're looking through the early winter to finish up that engagement report and really get off and running in small groups, um, getting our chapters done. And this crosswalk document is a little bit starting to think about how we want to arrange our chapters. And, and how we want to address uh, the state-required elements. And then ultimately, who wants to work on what? Um, so for each chapter that we take on, we're going to be thinking about um, a couple of Planning Commission members, two or three on each, um, a, a lead staff person. Uh, we can do our documents out of SharePoint. Um, and also hooking that group up hopefully with a meeting or two with whatever department leadership in the town you might need to talk to, or with the school board, if it's the education section. And really staff serving as uh, sort of fixers to engage, engage those out. And really staff serving as sort of fixers to engage, engage those outside forces or other departments as we draft these. So the part I've struggled with is how we really want to structure the plan. Obviously there are these elements that have to be in the plan. There's the way we arranged the chapters last time. We want to have a chapter at the beginning that's an introduction. We want to have a chapter at the end that's basically the implementation table. But there is some freedom to do other stuff. I actually was surprised in taking on creating this thing. We kind of end up back not that far off from the structure of the old plan. And I, and I think that's okay. But one thing Melinda and I talked about a little bit is I brought up the idea of maybe collecting some of these things under the five categories that we used at the roundtables. And then talking a little bit about the way some of the different sections interact and overlap. And I keep coming back to this thing that's not required. And someone's going to come up with a better word for it because we didn't like the word we had, which is a sort of like social infrastructure idea. Where, where do we get?
I don't know. No, I mean, I, I totally, yeah, tell, explain the concept.
So coming out of COVID, but certainly before COVID and doing the form-based code, we talked a lot about the way the town can create and enhance and encourage things in the town that let its people engage with one another, support one another, make each other's lives better, come together as a community or, or work together as a community. And it's things that are as diverse as we talked about it in terms of having public gathering spaces in tapped corners as part of the form-based code. We talked about it in terms of having private open area at individual apartment buildings in form-based code. But we might think about it in terms of support for the local arts community. Or flexibility in zoning. So Adam's Farm can hold a food truck night. Or what's the evolving nature of our programming that is offered through our recreation department? Where does building a community center fit into all of this? What about the Brick Church Music Series? What about the Historical Society? What about what we've been doing around Greenup Day? There's a way that the town and the comprehensive plan can kind of at least sort of express a nexus between all of those things and then talk about ways that what the town does can enhance those things that I think are critical and can kind of be harder to hang on to as, as a town gets bigger.
Love it.
And none of that does the state of Vermont say you have to do. No one's, no one's gonna ask you for that section, but I think it helps a lot with livable, livable, resilient, equitable. It's something that we've talked about a little bit in the past, but just like there's, there's like a lot of stuff infrastructurally, programmatically, public sector, private sector. And because we regulate the private sector with zoning here in, in the planning office that kind of touches on all that. And so that's something I've been kind of, I don't know if it's a chapter or if it's, you know, something that we sort of identify elements of other chapters with. But I think it's, it's especially critical to that, that livability idea. Vibrancy, we, we sort of threw the vibrancy word around. It's like, well, that's kind of some of it. But I think, I think there's an opportunity to make a really affirmative statement of like, that stuff is important. Because I think if we think back to the roundtables, that's some of what people were saying is important to them about.
It's the essence of community.
Yeah. So.
I mean, isn't it like, like building community connection?
Yeah.
The, and, and I, I don't know. I mean, I'll be, and I'm skipping Chapin. Go ahead, Chapin.
I, I, I'm really glad, Matt, that you brought up that point because building community is what I would call it, but that, I forget the name of the theory that I went to a conference on once, but it said when people move to a new area, if they, their sense of community determines how much they feel safe and welcome and happy. And as an example, if they find a religious organization that they can join and that religious organization has potluck dinners, their happiness with their community and also the strength of the community and the rate of crime is way down compared to somewhere that's less community built, yeah, less, has less building of community. And so I feel like this goal is an overarching goal, much like climate change. And so it should be in the introduction and should be referenced in the other chapters as appropriate. And then I, that's, that's fun. This thing about building community. On the first question, which was how do we organize the new town plan? I wouldn't be upset if we use the old organization, but it might make it harder to really redo it the way we want to in a more readable manner. And I wondered if in, from, if staff in reviewing area plans have already been done recently, like South Burlington and so forth, or the ones that's, that we all reviewed from our past at that meeting where we shared ones from other places. I was wondering if staff had a feeling like, oh, that one really is the kind of readable town plan that we're looking for and, and let's see if we could start with their organization and save us starting from scratch. And I, I guess I want to add that this crosswalk is really useful information. If I'm on one of the chapters working on it, looking at this crosswalk could be very helpful. But I did not find that the crosswalk helped me know how to organize the new plan.
Matt, just to add a comment to that, the, you, you asked the question about sort of the five main themes that we talk about. I wonder if those could in fact be sections and under each section are individual chapters. Just something to think about. Yeah. I might try to hash that out in the document that I share out with folks later this week and see if that helps us organize a little bit. There are plans out there going, going to what Chapin said also that might use like some symbology or certain colors to say, you know, this is about livability or this is about community connection or things like that to try to, to bring those themes through. So there's, there's some ways we can illustrate. One, one local town plan, I can say, I think does some of this, or at least is really accessible, uh, when I was looking around Colchester was kind of in the level of brevity and illustration and conversational tone and organization. It, it, I read it and I've been like in and out of Colchester for a few things over the last many years. But I was like, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't realize that. Like it, it felt as close as I could get to being that new resident who picks up the town plan and kind of gets like a different understanding maybe. So whether it's the way that one's actually organized or not, I'm not sure. But what I walked away from it after, you know, an hour skim was kind of what I was, what I was hoping for.
I do, I, I would, I know it's hard to break this mo- model and mode. So I'm not, and I don't have a good proposal, which is annoying. But I, I find our town plan, our current town plan very hard to like pick up and engage with. And partly is, it is just very text heavy, obviously, and it doesn't, it's not, you can't navigate it easily and I, I know Emily will not stand for anything like that. So I'm not worried about that, but I do think that organization is part of it because these are kind of technical terms and like department terms that are not what I, like if I'm thinking about like as a citizen and I'm the best person, but I think it is good to think about it from somebody who's not inside of this, like what do they care about? Like Jill said, they care about like, is this gonna be, you know, what, what is the economy and the, you know, livability of this place? What are the community connections? You know, what, what is the access to recreation? You know, so some of them could stick, but like, why would you, why would a common citizen not involved in this think that land use was separate from watershed health or open space and working landscapes? Like all of those, I think to a normal person sound pretty connected and similar. So I just, I don't know how, again, I don't know how, and maybe it is making those bigger buckets. But again, I, I do think that we need to kind of at least get rid of these terms to kind of come back to a term that somebody who's not from inside would understand. And then the other one, the other thing that I think I talked to you about, Matt, a while ago was under each section, however, we break up the sections, being really clear about the, the priorities and I should be able to list them off the top of my head and I'm not going to be able to do that. But being really clear about how that section meets those priorities of equity and livability. And I think we should add, you know, building community connection or whatever we want to call it, building community to that. And then have the top priority of the town for that section. Sort of do that forced red box exercise that we made the groups do so that it's like that, you know, the top priority for recreations and park, recreation and parks section is to build that darn path between the village and the, you know, whatever those things are. So that we're really kind of naming pieces that we think are the most important. So those were, those are things I think I've maybe talked to you about, Matt, but I just wanted to say out loud to everybody. And I do really hope that the, those buckets are kind of buckets that normal people would know to reference.
Yeah. That's good. And I haven't looked at the little draft outline, the plan chapter outline I did recently, but I think I tried to put that red box idea in. And if I haven't done it with enough emphasis, we can do that.
Go ahead, Megan.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, this, that, those chapter titles from Colchester are really, I think really inspirational. So, uh, this, this, like, what do we call this thing that we're after on the sort of social cultural side? Is kind of my line of work. So, um, so in, in my discipline, we call it a lot of, I think what you were talking about, we refer to as like sense of place. And, um, and the, there's a whole literature on this, but it would include things like having strong cultural institutions, connected communities, great public spaces, especially intergenerational and very inclusive and welcoming. And also really good communication. And I think that's an, another thing that, you know, we've, we're really lucky to have things like from porch forum and a town newspaper. Like a lot of places don't have a town newspaper anymore. And so some of those are the, the cultural institution piece as well. And, you know, and obviously there are things like schools and churches and events that are a focus of a community. But ultimately I think a lot of it also then comes down to these issues of particularly along the lines of equity because, uh, and, and I'm not sure equity is quite the right word that I'm looking for here. But it's what I'm thinking of is around, the idea that people have adequate access to health and food security and energy security and good transportation options so that they can explore the community side of things. When you're really stressed out with food insecurity and you think you might get evicted and your kid has gotten kicked out of school. You know, like those things are, are too, they're like frosting on the cake when you're in that situation. And I think what, you know, a lot of what I have studied in my work, but also that I, I love about Williston is that there is this sort of dimension of caring and effort to kind of lift up folks who are not as privileged and are not wealthy and are not necessarily, you know, welcomed by everyone. And so I, I realize a lot of that is very intangible. But I think there are things that we can do as a planning commission to make sure that we foster those, those dimensions of connectivity and the places where that happens. And so I'll just kind of leave it there, but I'm, I'm super excited to hear that there's interesting about.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that got me, like, that's why I'm here, right? It's like, how does the built environment inform how our community can connect with each other? And it's like simple thing in like, in those scenarios where you're talking about, Megan, where you know, you have like, it's like, if your like grade A needs aren't met, like the grade B stuff, like, it's like all that stuff, like it doesn't matter, but kind of that like loose, the, the looser connections, the looser social connections, like they might not be the person that you call in the middle of the night when something goes wrong. But like the looser ones, like you know who your neighbor is, like that really lifts, like that lifts up kind of everybody. Like I like mow this path behind my house on someone else's land, but I haven't cared yet. Three quarters of a mile down a hill, but now I know other neighbors because they walk on it. And my like sense of like pride in where I live is much higher, not just like, not pride, but like connection. Like I feel more tied to it because I know who else lives there. And like, I think those like loose connections and like incorporating in our plan, like how does what we do with our town and like we build our town, like impact the people who live there? So I agree with everything that you were saying. Yeah. As something I'm thinking about in terms of like organizing the town plan, I agree with what you're saying Shayla about the, it needs to be human readable. And like, so if we have terminology, it needs to be like the way that people not insiders think about it. But I also think about it in the form of like progressive disclosure, like, like you should be able to go in and be like, there's a one pager and it's like about transfer, like you should get a one pager, high level view of everything and you can deep dive if you want to. And like find that information like Chapin, sometimes you mentioned meetings. I'm like, how, how did you know? Like where are you finding this information? Like I need to find it. But like kind of having this maybe be like more of like a living document, I think we've talked about in previous times where like, maybe it's something that like links to ongoing work in areas or things like that. But like kind of echoing what we've been saying, it's like, this is the category, this is our vision for it. And then these are our top three action items. And then, you know, it can link to like, maybe like after the one pagers, it goes into like, this is details. But a lot of people, they only care about one specific thing. They're moving to a place and want to look at the economic development. Or they're, you know, they care about one specific aspect or a couple, but that's just something that like in terms of organization, I think like having many categories, I mean, like a reasonable amount, but like, I think the categories we have now are pretty good. Maybe we condense down the ones that you mentioned Shayla, that like people don't necessarily make a logic, like a functional distinction between, but I don't think it's bad to use what we have, just make it less unwieldy. Cause I think our current one feels kind of, yeah, it just feels a little unwieldy. When you jump in, you're like, I want information, but this is like a fire hose.
I'm a big fan of the concept of belonging. There's like a lot of research around that term and the theme of it. And I think you can put it into policy, you can put it into community, you can put it into space. And I, I like the word itself. I think it's something that you see more and more in things and it's, it's very inclusive and it can include the equity piece and it can include, you know, the facets of all those things that we want in that paragraph about the economic development. So I don't know, that, that like rings more true to what I want for Williston than like vibrancy or like those types of words. And I think, um, like you're saying, Hannah, like you belong to your neighborhood because you mow and then you see people. It's like, you know, I've seen Megan biking when I'm pushing my kids in the wagon like on East Hill Road because I'm walking down to the farm to see the horse. Like that's a community. So. Go ahead, Chapin.
It, this raises an interesting point, which is that as we've had developments over the last twenty or thirty years that have names and common areas and science facilities like swimming pools, people belong to South Ridge, they belong to Brendan Woods or East. View circle or whatever. And, um. That's a good thing in its own right. But we then we lose out on the belonging to the community of Williston. And so I think, um. There we may as the body that. That writes the zoning bylaws, we may be able to do something. And we already sort of did it in Taft Corners where we have already identified comment, you know, open space and things sort of. We prejudged who's going to own a given parcel. And develop it as a as a development. Project. But I feel as though we may want to somehow codify. That, um. Like a community center for the town. Is a priority over a. Clubhouse for a development. Do you see what I'm saying? There's. Right now, our our zoning encourages developers to try to make their development attractive by putting features within it. And then people belonging to that. Sort of enclave. And it, I, there's a. There's dissonance between that and wanting Williston to have all its citizens feel that they belong.
Yeah, in fact, the statement, and I forget if it's in growth management or the bylaw about parks is. We're going to make developers build park in these neighborhoods they create so that the town doesn't have to build parks and so the town doesn't have to. Maintain parks. And you know, then you you get the park that's commensurate to the. The build level of the development you can afford to be in. And. Yeah, I think all of us on the staff have kind of read that statement at some point and gone, really? Like. Wow, that doesn't feel like, you know, what what we want. And the other thing I'll say about this, just I I, this is a really unique experience that um, I've had. You know, we encounter over the course of our time here, the the people in Williston who feel really. Disenfranchised, really left behind, really upset about. The way things are going in town, quote unquote. And, um. I think that one of the interesting common threads is. Many of them are from some of the oldest. Developments. In Williston. Where they did belong to Lamp Light Acres. Or, um. Trying to think some of the other ones like.
Old Stage Road.
Old Stage Road. They belonged, they belonged to something when it was built and they've been here for a long time and. You know, like, um. Lamp Light no longer has. A neighborhood association. And it has a sort of an aging and transitional population, um. It it's the the homes are getting older, the streets are getting older. When the town took the streets over, it took the lamps out. Because it had it had more street lights than. The town typically has, and there are people who are upset about that. And I'm I'm not not just a pick on Lamp Light, but I've noticed this trend where. When that sense of, you know, this is, this might be Brendan Woods or Southridge in twenty or thirty years. Where it starts to not really feel like a neighborhood anymore in the absence of something else to connect to. Um, the 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 people I talk to who are the most upset about, again, sort of quote unquote, the way things are going in town. The common thread has been they they don't really seem to feel connected to anything at all. Uh, they feel disenfranchised both from the town, but also just from the community. As a whole, um. And. I think maybe some of that is that there's not a. A town thing to necessarily jump into, um.
Right, there's no.
Be a part of. Yeah, so that, yeah, there's no cohesiveness and. You know, this is the the unique. Sort of challenge of Williston is that our most intense. Center. Uh, contains essentially zero civic. Amenities or presence whatsoever. And until not that long ago, it wasn't really a place where almost anybody lived. You know, and the town's undergoing like a whole transformation around that.
I found that so interesting, you know, as someone who can really remember not knowing anything about Vermont essentially. And then moving here to Williston and the only thing people told me about Williston. Was that, oh, it has a lot of money because they have the box stores and they were like really convinced that we had all this like flush of cash because we. Had made all these arrangements and I looked around and thought, well, there's nothing for the people of this town. Like the people of this town don't have paths, the people of this town don't have a civic center, the people of this town don't have. Theaters, I don't know, but you know, it's like I thought. There was this very bizarre disconnect to me of that. People who lived in the Upper Valley and people, you know, it's like my my wife's relatives essentially were all, you know, telling me Williston, it's a box store, you know, and I didn't know one town from another. And I moved there and I thought, oh, well, we must have sweet resources, but instead I'm going to Winuski to go to the pool and I'm going. You know, up to different um, libraries for like different library days because there are bigger facilities that can then bring in, you know, different things. So it's. I think our town has the possibility to do this, right? Like with the form based code with this, it's like.
There's a whole story to that, the 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 Reader's Digest version being that Williston thought by developing commercial. We would have a better tax base and make lower our school taxes and then the state went to statewide school tax. And so we were, we basically hung ourselves out to dry and then they added local option tax option, which we signed up for. Which basically has put us back to even.
Yeah, and I'll say, you know, in interacting with things that happen on a statewide level, um, when when I'm going out trying to find resources for Williston, I get a lot of pushback of. Either Chittenden County is a wealthy place or especially Williston is a wealthy place. Why, why do you want to be? Why do you want to have access to this grant program? Why do you, why do you want to have um, other funding mechanisms in place? You guys have all kinds of money, you have, you have the second lowest taxes on the muni rate in the county. Um, it it's politically starting to feel very difficult, um. To make the case for Williston. Um, accessing more statewide resources and. I've got a big, big, long rant about a bill that's out there right now about the designations program that I'll spare everybody for right now, but um, because I don't, I don't, I don't know how to. Participate in it productively yet. But some of what I was told about my frustration with with that and and what it might mean for the future of our growth center. Um, was. Look, Matt, the political winds are, Williston's a rich place, you guys don't, you guys don't need help. Funding new grid streets and stormwater treatment in Taft Corners, you you guys got plenty of money.
It does seem to be the understanding from like the layman to the the policymakers. That's my take on it.
Yes.
Uh, and just for awareness, I think we're now being identified as the highest rate of retail theft per capita in the country.
Oh, wow.
That Home Depot in Williston was the highest rate per cap, like in the country, like Chapin said, I read it.
But also, can I just uh, be a geography professor for a second that anything? Uh, this is my usual hat, right? Literally. Vermont, anything per capita, Vermont always stands out because we don't have many capita.
It is a key piece.
We also have the most craft breweries per capita. You know, like, okay, but.
The number side comes in, yes.
Um, but I I do think in talking about um, sense of place belonging, community connections and the way the town might in. Invest in those things, there is a, um. There's a place for the town plan to say some things about what people might. Might have not seen in town in the past and might want to see. Uh, in the future, prior to this meeting, um, Emily was in here staffing the hack and there's. Snowstorm going on outside and she messaged me on Teams, they must have been talking about the sidewalks. And she said, does the first she said, does V-Trans plow any sidewalks? And. Well, I said, nah, V-Trans isn't plowing sidewalks anywhere like they 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 might build it for you, but they'll never plow, it's all of us. And she said, well, um, you know, what's the? What's the priority or order of doing them? Why aren't, why isn't anything plowed yet? I see them plowing the streets and. I had this thought, I I was like, well, I I think they. Send the guys out in the trucks and until they get the the roads and streets kind of under control, they don't really put anybody on the sidewalk plows, um, and maybe not overnight. So I was looking for the. If there was a policy on this and I Googled Williston sidewalk policy and. When you Google things, you can find things on the town's website that aren't linked anywhere anymore. So I found what was clearly an old one. And it says like three different ways, roads are the priority. We will not plow one sidewalk until the roads are plowed. And and we only plow the sidewalks in the village, which is not true anymore. Hasn't been for a really long time. But this document is recent enough to have been uploaded on the town's website. Sometime in the last twenty years, that's where we were. And you know, my my case is that, um. You know, incremental, but nevertheless, transformation, I think is is possible around those things and, um. Shifting of priorities is possible and and what you all do and and what we do in this document, you know. Don't, don't be afraid of saying we're going to do something different than we did before.
I think that's why those first two sections you have fifty years of change, fifty years of planning are really important. Just to paint a picture to say, look where we are. You know, many of you haven't been here long enough, and I haven't, but you haven't been here long enough to say. Well, what was it like fifty years ago? Or even when we did the last plan, look how much has changed. Now look where we're going from there. That's a, that's an important message to deliver.
I think about it. As, um. You know, every everywhere is. Changing all the time, but some places are changing faster. Than others and. I think to be in Williston. Today is to have sort of, you know, stepped into a fairly swift moving stream that's been kind of doing that for a while and is probably going to do it. For a while out and to kind of. That's the thing I would like, you know, someone like, you know, Jill, when you first came here, you're one of our more recent. Folks, I think.
You can commit that, Lander, I'm used to it.
Yeah, that's, you know, like. I I think just that idea of like somebody who's like, I just came here and wow, it's changing. And it's like, yeah, it has been and it and it is and it will be. And some people come here from places that are just like that or more so. Um, I mean, I have colleagues who are planners in. You know, South Carolina where they're like, we just grew by three hundred percent in the last. Four years or something, you know, someone who's out on the edge of the raw Durham area or something like that. Our change is steadier than that and and not that fast, but it's perceptible. And I think. You know, looking like, I, what I love about, you know, when they have the Colchester plan up is it's, you know, most of the pages are like fifty percent pictures or better. Um, and it's very, very short and to the point. And to say like, okay, if you know, if you just got here and you picked up this town plan, do you understand? Um, this is a, as far as Vermont goes, a fairly dynamic place, um, and you know, we're going to work with that, um. I think that would, I think that would be a good thing. It, because it's not just like it was changing. And now we're planning for more, it's just like, it's, you know, the the. The train is still moving.
I do think that going back to, I'm so sorry, I can't remember who said it. I'm a huge fan, I, in my day job, I'm. Not a geography professor, so I'm not, I'm not even trying to come close to that expertise, but I do edit a lot of legislative reports. And I have really pushed our teams to make them short and if they're not. Fewer than five pages, absolutely always have an executive summary, which is that one page. And so I think. In in thinking about what that executive summary looks like. Having it. In the beginning, like after the table of contents, like each section, just those really high level, like here's how we're addressing equity here, here's how we're addressing this, here's how we're addressing that, and this is our top priority. In whatever chapter A. Um, and having that be an executive summary and then depending on how long the whole thing is. If each, if a chapter goes past five pages, having a one page executive summary. And maybe just doing it for each chapter so that you. You know, could hop through it. And just hit those one page documents for each chapter. Or just hit that really high level plan. Um, because some people won't. Able to want to read any further than that. So just like structurally making sure we have that. Package and then we could even have a separate. Link or document that's just that really high level. You know, here's the. One for each chapter so that you can just. You know, whip through six, five, six pages. Um, and get the goals and get the top priorities. Um, really quickly.
I totally agree with that, except that I don't think we should call it executive summaries. I think that's very, it's very off putting, you know, to people, um, but I I I agree with the principle. I just think we need to call it like. You know. Summary of highlights or.
Maybe we need like the three minute town plan, the seven minute town plan, and like the twenty seven minute.
Yeah, exactly.
How much time do you have? And I'll give you the right one.
The appetizer. The lunch or the dinner.
And we can add the podcast too with Stephen.
But I mean, the benefit of like, no one's reading it on paper hardly ever, like it's going to be a PDF like or how whatever format it is, it like gives the option to like. Have links and like have a menu that like is sensible to like navigate that way. You're like, okay, I want to know more. Okay, no, I did not want to know more, like. That sort of thing like gives that like level, like option for levels.
Yeah, I mean, I would like it to go all the way from. We like paths and they're really important to, I would like to read. The Oak Hill Road Safety Study. You know, the the library of links and it's that compendium of like. Here's all the information the town has at its disposal. And if all you want to know is we like paths or, you know, we want to be able to bike places, great, um, but it. It is a real opportunity to organize things. I'll know we've done a good job. When I and our staff starts using it. As our way to find stuff. Like I I know we do a good job organizing the DRB materials because it's actually where I go when I need to figure out. What did the DRB do? Sometime in the last six months because because I can scroll through and I can go find it, um. And, you know, there's all, there's another whole aspect to this, which is. We're really focusing on getting the key facts assembled and and writing the words out, um, for the next six months or so. And then. Hopefully getting the select word on on board with those words. And as we're getting them going on that, we're doing the graphical and the interactive part and the publication part, um, going into, um, like the, you know, fall, winter of of, um. Fall, winter of twenty four and winter of twenty five is when when it's like, okay, now make it. Make it accessible, make it beautiful, um. That kind of thing. So I think we're still very much on track to do that, but I want to keep us going on, um. You know, getting getting the structure stuff, I'll follow up on that and then getting where people are interested and who else we should go talk to and, um. Stuff like that. In the meantime, the engagement report should be coming out.
Can I toss out a really kind of a, to use a technical term, a crazy wild ass idea? Is anyone ever given any thought to potentially building the Williston app? And the reason I ask the question is because I I just did a big project with a major medical. Organization where they ran a really hard time creating. Community and outreach and connectivity with their membership and it's really important to them. And I I just asked them, I said, why haven't you done this? I mean, you've got education, you've got information, you've got products that you sell, you've got, you know, stuff that people. You want people to know about and if they do buy it, they know about it. But they don't, they don't know how to get to it. And if you have an app. And everybody in Williston has the app, it's in, then Williston is in everybody's pocket. Which means that we can send out information to everybody at one time. We can say, hey, there's a meeting tonight, you might want to come, here's some new pictures we just found, you know, I mean. Look at the, look at the new drone footage of the church. I mean, I'm just. I I'm just planting a seed that as a maybe a follow up to the plan, this might be an interesting concept to. Think about. The best part is the organization that I'm working with didn't have much money and they got a. Local community college student, you know more about this than I do. To build the app in like thirty minutes and all they had to do was provide the content and it it has gone like a prairie fire. I mean, it's. Incredibly popular, so. Just a seed to plant.
I'll, I'll look, you know, we're working with our website vendor right now to, um, begin updating the the town's website.
Oh, yeah.
Don't get too excited. But it'll be, it'll be functional.
I'm getting better at finding things.
We're going to unvary a lot of stuff and it and it's and it's part of us using SharePoint as a backend for documents, uh, because we're paying a lot of money for storage on on website right now. With like, we love throwing everything we can up there, but it's costing us particularly what the DRB uh, with scan plans. It's costing a lot to do it that way. So um, we're working on that. I wanna look and see if some of those vendors actually have an app um option. South Burlington tried some kind of an app thing at one point and it got right to the point where they wanted me to type in my driver's license number and I got. Kind of weirded out by it and then I think they stopped using it.
That's weird.
It was, it was like a public interaction and we wanna make sure you really are who you say you are kind of thing, but it was, it was a little um overbearing.
No kidding.
But it, you know, it's particularly something, I mean. I'll just say we're starting from a place where um we don't. Even really have any one person in town who handles communications. Departments are doing that on their own. Um, police, fire and the rec department each have their own websites that are not the town website. For rec, it really is because they need more of an e-commerce. S- thing just to to do all their reservations and stuff like that. I think for police and fire, it's because they wanted something that looked better than what they could um do with the town. Um, but we're, we're um. We're not great at our web presence, but I will say none of our fellow municipalities really are either. Yeah, South Burlington's rough. Although I was able to find my nineteen sixty-eight sewer connection permit for my house and I now know where my sewer pipe is, which is really cool. Cuz they they scanned and made searchable like everything they had. But they use a thing called laser fiche, which is like microfiche, but. Scan and it comes with a structure and they also use a a a solution called clerk base for setting up meetings and meeting materials that. You know, it's like, if you wanna know what the DRB's up to, you you gotta know the right date and open the right PDF and then it's a. Seventy-page monster. So we've, we've done a lot of work to make what we do as accessible as we can, but it's also pretty cumbersome. South Burlington does a good weekly announcements thing, it's just an email digest, but they actually do have someone who puts that together and. As a citizen there, I appreciate that, but the website itself is like.
There can, like their user website is beautiful, but it might be impossible to find things.
It's beautiful, the front pages are beautiful. And maybe I just interact with the planning office one too much.
Yeah, that's probably it.
Um, but but the beauty goes like two or three layers and then and then you start trying to find stuff and. It gets, it gets uh a little hairier, so, yes. Um, ours will end up being beautiful, more beautiful, more graphical, all of that stuff, but we are also trying to make it um. More functional and and um cheaper. Or or at least less expensive. But I love the idea, I mean, I, you know, um. My son's ski team uses an app and it's how the coaches communicate everything like, hey, the T-bar broke and you need to come get your kid, which is what happened tonight. You know, but als- but also like there's other scheduling functions that happen in there. Yes, tell me what's going on with this aspect, no, don't. Like, I could be subscribed to planning but not subscribe to rec, but it's all coming through the same app because I can just say what things I wanna know about. So I'll look around, so I'm sure somebody's doing that really well, um and even somebody our size probably is doing that pretty well.
Chaping going.
Just covered everything from backend re-document retrieval to frontend um presentation. And um, I, all of that's good, the one comment I wanted to make is that what. Is already happening with the Planner's Corner on Front Porch Forum is a gem. In terms of engaging the community in what we are doing. And when you start with an app as your frontend, you do. Excludes some people who are not technology savvy. Um, at this point, it's hard to say that people don't have smartphones, but um they may not know how to use them and they may be elderly. Uh, you know, may not be because of lack of education. And so um I think more people process email than pro- they can run an app, install an app and run it. And the email can have links obviously to the website, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and I'm glad that Front Porch Forum now allows pictures. But um I just wanna say we have to be careful about equity if we are too technology-centric. I I do like the ideas, though.
Well, I think that we um, we do have a local newspaper and not everybody, every community has one, we can commit to continuing to support them by buying ads. I don't think there's any getting out of uh that, but we have budgeted. More for paper advertising over the years, um not to prop up the newspaper, but because. We just, we know it ends up in everybody's mailbox. And um I will say too, our email digest for Planner's Corner, Emily's noted that um. Over the last few that we've done, our open rate has gone way down.
I haven't gotten them, so maybe there's.
Something's sending it to a bunch of people's spam folders. And we're trying to figure it out, um the library has this like fantastic. Like forty-five percent open rate or something and ours had gone down to like fifteen. But we thinks, we don't know if it's because we're putting a lot of links in the email, even though they're good, you know, they're legit links. But um something has dropped that significantly since um uh when we were using it uh. In like twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So we're gonna look into that too. Again, if there was like a real communications person, they they would tell us like. Right away, like, oh, do this instead. You know, there could be a key phrase we're using that gets us kicked up, I I don't know what it is, um but. Um, as a small staff, we struggle a lot with like what to put limited time and effort into. With communication, I started talking to him, it's like, I'd really like to just send like a weekly email out, like, here's what's going on in the planning office. You know, I could write it and someone else in the meeting looked at me and said, well, Matt, that's that's Planner's Corner, I was like, yeah, I know, and I have a hard time writing that like even once a month. There are some things, though, I will say, I've no, started to try to pull out. There's some stuff we produce for the select board, like quarterly reports. Um, and like the predicted new development for the upcoming five fiscal years that um. The way they share documents with the select board, the way Eric and Aaron do do that. Some of it just gets piled into the manager's report and you wouldn't necessarily know it was there. And they do also distribute some materials to select board without putting it on the website, it's just like here, this is like in your packet. It's not really uh an agenda item. So sometimes when we spend some time writing something, I I tend to wanna, without stepping on any toes. You know, publicize it a little bit more, cuz even those quarterly reports, at least you know how many houses got. Permitted in Williston last quarter, um or how many permits went out the door or the value of construction. Or just like what the staff's been up to, you know, it's a, it's a two-pager. So thought about trying to share some of that out a little more as well.
Does any town have comms?
South Burlington does have a communications person and Burlington definitely does, I don't know.
Yeah, they do for sure.
I don't know if anybody smaller or like our size really does.
You know, it's like Richmond and Heinsberg, Williston, like one, one comp to like help each little town. It is, it's a full-time gig, I mean, it's an important too, it right, it's like talking to your constituents, talking to your, your residents, your people who live there, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. No, I think we all, all of us smaller places do kind of um struggle with it and just, you know, the the picture from inside Town Hall. Um, we're really lucky that the town supported a good-sized planning office uh early on. Um, but when you go over into the manager's office, you know, when I started here fifteen years ago, there was the town manager. And there was um Susan, who was the finance director. And she was like the HR director, the treasurer, the um, I don't know. Like, all of the non-town clerk administrative stuff was Susan and she took the hard drive home every night to back up the. To keep the data backed up offsite, like she took the tape drive home with her at night. Um, and and slowly, you know, we have a treasurer, we have an assistant to the town manager. We have folks doing payroll, we're, we're looking at an HR position. But that's really where we are in the evolution of the town is, you know, we have over a hundred employees now. And we're starting to get bigger and and be able to specialize a little bit, but it is one little painful step. At a time, for sure. So I don't know where communications falls there in that.
Is it premature to, for folks to discuss what they're interested in, like, because we haven't decided on groups or categories or chapters or?
Yeah, I I let's just, I I mean, taking sort of the five categories, if I can do them off the top of my head, right? We had energy, um and the environment, homes and people, uh economy.
Economy and jobs.
Jobs.
Parks, programs and facilities. Uh, transportation and mobility, that's it.
So with some of those common thread things we talked about tonight, we might very well be able to put, put our chapters um. In those categories. And some of this, like, I don't want anybody to feel like they're precluded from working on something if they don't end up in a particular. Group as much as anything, it's setting up the structure so I can turn staff loose and um start meeting with people, so. I'm also sensing, I think, on that sort of everything we talked about tonight category, a lot of interest from almost everybody to. Be be looking at that, so. I don't know, I, one, one way of thinking about it, for those of you who are thinking about a particular category would be um. What's either missing from the current plan or what have we not talked about yet that lives in that? So if you're thinking about. I mean, jobs and economy is easy cuz there's virtually no economic development plan. Um, and there's not really a discussion of what it means to have jobs or not have jobs or have more jobs or fewer jobs. Jobs, you know, Williston's a workplace and it's a place where economic activity happens, like. What are the important things to talk about in a section like that? I mean, there's all kind of numbers we can look up, but. What's the town's relationship to that, the fact that there's a lot of employment and a lot of commerce happening here?
I'll volunteer for transportation and energy.
I was hoping you would.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm curious about everyone's like gut interests, I guess I haven't been around long enough to know what they are. Um, like, cuz obviously the things I find interesting, like, well, obviously, those are the best. My interest would be in like transportation and then parks and um, parks and facilities and programs that, that, those two buckets.
I'm also parks and the programs.
I'm like the people and the housing.
Uh, economy and jobs. Cool, this is amazing.
I probably like the homes and people one, but also transportation and mobility.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, would it, do you think it would be helpful to sort of, like, if staff. Kind of checked out some of those examples a little bit more and maybe brought like the sort of a. A compendium of different, you know, even even just the table of contents, you know, you can like. Like, like I love Colchester's table of contents, it's just like so straightforward, you know, and. I don't know, I I mean, I don't know, I think. It might be helpful to just sort of. Think about the structure, I don't know if you saw some more examples.
Yeah, maybe we pull some examples in by category.
Yeah.
And um talk over that a little bit. That would be useful as well. I think we can get a pretty good spread of members across these various categories and um, you know. Some of it's gonna be about um giving each, each one um a staff lead. A draft chapter to work on um or chapters. Um, some contact information, staff can be the sort of the liaison with like, oh, we, you know, for this chapter, we definitely gotta go sit down with the. Fire chief and talk about how he sees the world, or we need to go get some time in front of the school board. The schools are such a mystery to me. Cuz I really see their world from the outside. And I really like to understand um that world better. You know, um, we might. Spend some time like on recreation, talking with the rec director and the rec committee, which, who I don't think we've talked to about town plan yet. But I know Todd thinks a lot about the changing nature, the demand for programming and services and facilities in in Williston. Particularly related to being an aging community. Um, that has, that focus has been different. Than it once was, so. Um, and then also, one thing, you know, we, we had um. CCRPC staffed is sort of a cursory review of our existing plan as a a means to provide us with some feedback about what the new one should be like. And we don't talk a lot about how all these things relate to the broader region. So that was one of the criticisms, like, if you look at our maps here in the, in the office, uh they they end.
It's floating in space.
Which, which looks very neat and tidy, but isn't, you know, obviously the way it works, it's not the way people live. It's not the way watershed boundaries work. It's not how what the deer do, um, any of that.
I mean, it should be more like that, uh future land use plan should show. The um, the, the other, the surrounding towns maybe masked out a little bit, like, you know, but but show them.
Yeah, you know, one, one um. Thing that's kind of interesting is we've never in the town plan actually talked about the regional plan map. Which there, there is one, you know, there's the CCRPC has a map of the whole county where they've looked at all of our future land use areas and. Sort of given them common names, like residential, industrial. Mixed use served by transit, et cetera, um and actually. It's likely that there will be a um. Something coming out of the legislature asking all of the regional planning commissions to sort of homologate. Their land use designation such that there can be a statewide map. Such that there can be a statewide understanding of how Vermont um works.
Well, are you talking about the zoning atlas?
No.
Something else, yeah.
No, there was a study bill that happened over the summer about like, how do we actually. Start doing some statewide land use planning in Vermont after we tried to in the seventies and and there was a map in the newspaper and everybody freaked out and so it never happened. And it's sort of, where it's coming from would be like sort of a ground up, like the the RPC looks at all the future land use maps of. Its communities. Puts them into a map and then all of the planning regions bring their maps together. So that our idea of what an industrial zone is is the same as uh, you know, Morrisville's idea of what an industrial zone is. Just to use an example Melinda's familiar with. Uh, but um, such, such that, you know, there could be things like statewide economic planning that actually. Understood the lay of the land, um cuz believe it or not, that really doesn't exist in Vermont right now.
I I wonder, would it be helpful to staff if we were to do something kind of mechanical, like send, all of us agree to send you our first, second and third choices of what we.
Well, yeah, I I've been trying to like send you guys like a Google survey or something, just haven't got it together yet, so we'll.
We'll do that.
We'll do that, okay.
Chaping.
I think regional planning always should be emphasized and is great. The Colchester plan you referred to, I don't know if you still have it available to pull up. Melinda, but if you go to, for instance, page one fifty-eight. Um, you'll see how that map just has slight shading over the areas that are outside. Just has slight shading over the areas that are outside of it. Um, but that, that seems to be true of all the maps. Page one fifty-eight is very close to the end.
Okay.
There, oh, there, you're in the maps now.
Okay.
You can see it on that one too, um, but one fifty-eight is a clearer one.
Okay.
There, see how, oh, there. You can see how the adjacent towns are shown, but in a muted, uh, muted colors, but with the same color scheme for the same things.
Yeah.
Boy, that's.
They must, they must have used Regional Planning Commission.
That's on its side, north is on the left, but.
No, I see, I, I see what you're saying and it, it does make it. Nice.
What's this one, a map? Are these land use areas?
Must be.
This might, this might be like.
Oh, energy plant, oh, energy. Yeah, so this did come from the Regional Planning Commission and they did, so that's why everything looks. Has that consistent look, cause they did it for the whole region, I think.
Yeah, so this is like known, known constraints.
Yeah.
Et cetera.
Yeah, so we will be getting that one, that particular one from. The regional planning.
Yeah.
But yeah, these other ones, at least show the roads. Um, I like showing an aerial for the other towns.
That, that they pulled soil, so that, that exists.
Yeah.
Regionally, already. But I all, you know, we looked, talking about it, like looking at maps, but I also think about it. Talking about it a little bit in words, um. You know, we often in the sort of what, what has stood for an economy section, we have the circle diagram that says this many people commute out of Williston. Go work somewhere else and this many people commute in, we know it's, it's a lot, it's most workers are doing one or the other. We've never really pinned down actual numbers on people coming here to shop. But I actually think there's. We should try to get some better numbers on that and also think about. How to talk about the fact that like half the state comes and shops here. Um, and how to talk about it in a. Dare I say positive way. Um, cause it's, it's happening no matter what. We are getting the local option sales tax revenue from it. It also is serving um, a regional demand. And sometimes I think about it like, look, half of Vermont. This is where you get to come buy a six pack of tube socks for, you know, ten bucks. And apparently a lot of you need to do that. Could we at least then please have a class one town highway and make the state highway that dumps you all in our front yard nicer to walk along? I, I don't, I don't know the right way to sort of. Do that, but. You know, um. Understanding that like, like the town knows, yeah, this is what we've got, this is, this, these are some cards we've been dealt in some ways, right or wrong. We've, we've responded to it over the years. Um, but, you know, in, in casual conversation, people will say things like, well, you know, Williston sold its soul. And it's like, well, no, like. Oh my gosh, like read the history of this and, and the struggle that went into this. And also don't overlook the good things that, that came out of it and, and the times, not every win was just. A, a denial of something, some of the wins were, you know, a sidewalk through a parking lot or a bigger tree or a park bench or whatever and. Better than many places have been able to pull that off and also in that. Statewide dialogue where people say, oh, you know, Williston's a rich place, why do you want any help with anything? You got all that, all those, all that riches and it's like, well. Yeah, but it's also a place that's like serving this big regional um, demand. And suffers some downsides as a result of that and would like some help. You know? So yeah, whether, whether you're talking about class one highways or, you know, grant funds or um, just more control over its own destiny, I think. You know, in, in recognition of it serving all that regional uh, demand, it's like, yeah, so let us. Let us have some sidewalks and some bike paths and some parks or um. Nicer stormwater treatment facilities.
Well, and we can also look at it as an opportunity, like it is, like, like you look at a town like, I guess, city. For Genes, right, where they're dealing with like immense amounts of traffic, cause their main arterial that people are just driving straight through. Yeah, sure, people stop on Main Street sometimes, but like, driving straight through, like. In Williston, like, yes, people do drive straight through it, but like, they're also stopping, they're going shopping, they're getting out of their cars, like. Once they get out of the car, like, it can be a more walkable environment to support smaller local businesses, like. What if that was an environment that was here and then that is like, you know, and it's like, oh, Williston has the box stores, that's the immediate association, but like. Trader Lane, what if it had smaller stores like that people could walk through, you know, like. Yeah, like framing the opportunity side of it as well, I think is kind of interesting to think about.
Yeah, and I think if you have that regional draw, it also means there's some small businesses that can be here. And, and can um, you know, tap into that, who, you know, uh, there's a new um. Like a very real Mexican restaurant.
Along with the very real Indian.
And there is a very real Indian restaurant. And, and I would argue those things would have an awful hard time making a go of it um, in Huntington right now.
Yeah, having a choice for dinner is like, yes, please. I don't understand how people get mad about that.
And you know, th- these are things that have never been written down in any kind of town plan.
They bring a good Mexican restaurant to you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really excited, I.
I talked to those guys, it's gonna be amazing.
Good.
That, if I, if I can jump in, I just wanted to add, I, I really like this conversation and I really like the idea of. Kind of spinning, I, I mean, I don't think it's just spinning, I think it's casting a better light on a lot of the things that. Um, that we do have, uh, you know, whether it's shopping or. Um, you know, the other kinds of, a, a Mexican restaurant or an Indian restaurant or whatever, um. I also wanna extend that to, to housing, because I think that's a very touchy issue for a lot of people. Um, who particularly, who, uh, you know, maybe that population you were mentioning before, Matt, were kind of disaffected. I- in some of the older development areas, uh, but also folks who. Have maybe been he- here less time, who maybe live in Brennan Woods or Southridge or. Um, you know, one of the more eighties, nineties developments, um, and. I, I, you know, it's very easy to frame the um, apartments and townhouses. And the other kinds of more multifamily configurations that we have um, in tough corners. It's very easy for those to be seen as like. Encroaching or um, to, growing too fast or too many people or. The wrong people or whatever it is, and I really wanna be, make sure that this plan frames. Those, um, the fact that we have those, that increased number of housing units as a really positive thing. Because it has brought, um, first of all, like we are still in a housing crisis, even though we have added all those. All those units, um, it has massively shifted the uh, diversity of households in the town. In terms of, um, you know, economics and in terms of family configurations, single householders, all those kinds of demographic markers. Uh, and has also improved the sort of economic and even potentially racial diversity. Of the town, um, and so, I, you know. I, I wanna make su- I'm, I'm very sensitive to, I realize that people don't like change, of course, and they. A lot of people wanna kind of like buy a house in the place and then have the place not change. Because that's what they bought into, right, which is un- understandable human, uh, sort of, um, response. But at the same time, the, you know, if we do wanna focus on, uh, I lo- I love that Jill brought in. Belonging, you know, if we want to foster a good, strong sense of place, if we want. Um, if we want interesting public spaces and better recreation opportunities and. Diverse restaurants to eat at, like, that's, oh, that's, you know, bringing more people in and more. A more um, eclectic mix of people, uh, is, is a really good thing. And also specifically the age profiling, because. Um, and Ellie, maybe you can fill us in as the, as the young voice in the committee, one of the young voices, Hannah, I think you're pretty young too. But uh, you know, this is not a place, I mean, of course, it's unaffordable for a lot of young folks anyway, but then. Um, you know, making sure that our, that our town is. Appealing and, and interesting to, to folks of all different ages and really supports them through all different ages. And, and I think the housing is, is part of that too, so. Um, anyway, sorry to kind of steal the, the, the vibe there, um, and appropriate it for housing, but. Um, but I really hope that we can bring kind of a nice balance to our discussion of housing.
Just wanna be conscious of time, um, I think we've had a really robust conversation here and I think all of us could keep going about. How we feel about Williston and what we hope for Williston and all those things, um. So is there any, anything else that needs to be added or wants to be added before we maybe have a call for wrapping up? Matt, do you feel like we hit where you wanted to with the crosswalk or do you need?
Yes.
Specific feedback, okay?
Um, no, I think we used up its usefulness, um. I'll move on to try to get some kind of a survey tool out to get people's areas of interest and we'll start to. Parse out what, what those chapters might be and start working on something if it, for some reason we have to change course, we can. So appreciate all the feedback uh, tonight and a little bit of the um. I'd say like sort of affirmation of some of the stuff we tend to talk about a lot as a staff, you know, we, we get kind of like all day, every day to. Kind of dream and scheme about this, um, it's really useful to actually check in with you who are responsible for it and say, are we going in the right. Um, direction, so appreciate that. Maybe uh, maybe we can all get together for some Mexican food soon.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, let's do it. Thanks, everybody.
Bye, thank you.
Select board still.